Good evening. Thank you all for being here today. This is the regular called meeting for Fountainhead City Council Thursday, March 13th, 2025. First, I'm going to ask Councilmember Garrett to lead us in our invocation.
Mayor, dear heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together tonight. Watch over us, lead, guide, and direct us. Be with us as we make decisions for the town and city. Be with the residents of the city. Watch over us, lead, guide, and direct us. In your name I do pray, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got some state champions in the room. We've also got some auditors in the room, so I don't know who wants to cheer loudest. And we've got some other presentations, but we're going to start with some really great, great, some great success from our recreation leagues. And I want to ask our recreation director, James Rice, as well as Coach Michael Crispell, to come on up. And we are going to recognize the Fountainhead Fury Junior Football State Champions here tonight. And James and Coach, I'll let you, if you want to kind of give a brief overview for the public, and then we'll have the athletes come on up.
All right. Well, tonight, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the members of council. We're excited to be here tonight. And so this is history tonight, so I want to take time to make sure we address it very well. This is the first time in Fountainhead's history that we are honoring our 12 U 2024 state champions. So let's give them a big round. I want to make sure you all remember that you are the first. That will never happen again. You can always remember that and tell this to your kids, your kids' kids. And you coaches, Mike Crispell, Mark Lawless, Fred Piles, Michael Taffey, you guys are amazing. And to all you parents who sacrificed and made this possible, on behalf of the city of Fountainhead, we certainly appreciate all the sacrifices you made. Thank you so much. And tonight, we'd like to honor you and to celebrate you with these certificates. We have the trophy up there with the mayor, and we have a banner that will forever be in your honor and be out at the field at PD and every time you go by. Those will be in commemoration of your accomplishments. Let's give them a hand again.
Coach, you want to say anything?
No, sir. I just want to say thanks to the mayor and thank council and thank Mr. James for allowing us our opportunity to go play that game.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, Coach and James, if y'all want to come in here, I'm going to have you bring up the, bring up the kids if we've got them in alphabetical order. And come on up.
It's a big kid right there. Number 75. Number 75. You wearing my number, man? That's what I want.
I just told him that he could pad up. He should pad up.
Hey, wait a minute. I'm going to show you something.
We're going to get crowded here for a little bit. Amanda, what we're going to do is we're going to call them up and they'll get their certificate. Larry's Choice. Come on up. Laura, we'll get a team picture at the end, too. Tyrell Leilitz. They have to run a couple of laps. Josiah Henderson. Dallas Lawless. Dylan Lawless. Jonathan. Nathan Martin. Bradley McElveen. Jordan Poe. Ashlyn Piles. Blaine Rogers.
I hate to speak down, but I mean, you hardly ever see a female on a pro ball team, okay?
Blaine Rogers.
You wanted to say a few words, right?
Elijah Stevens. Jackson. Riley Turner. Arden. Tristan Wilson. I mean, we're going to do a big one, man. You want to? Mike, you just got someone showing up. Hey, JP. JP.
Well, this is what we did last time.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
How you doing, buddy?
Oh, look at that. They're going to have to jump. The short guy. Bring it down. We can't bring it down. All right, everybody just look forward to smile for a second. Ready, one, two, three. Yeah, Scotty?
Is Mike still alive? All right. Everyone got it? Everyone got it? All right. Congratulations again.
Great job, guys. Hey, buddy. How are we? Good. Good to see you. What's up, Joe?
Oh, that's cool.
What's up, Mark? I got a picture of him you need to see.
I got all them badges.
He got a little bit of hair and some pink gym shorts on. We're putting that, putting that hammock in Mom and Dad's backyard. See, congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir, very much. Good job.
That's exciting.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Coach. Thank you.
Meanwhile, no one remembers the rest of the law.
Coach, you want, you want this up here? Okay. I'll put this next to me the whole meeting. Kind of see all that follows that up.
All right. We forgot the trophy for the auditor. Sorry.
I'm not positive the auditor's.
They're not here yet? Okay.
It would be hard to follow that up, though.
Right. What I would tell you is that a draft of the FY '24 audit was in your packet. It's in draft mode just for a little bit longer. They were here tonight to speak on that. Nothing, nothing major or anything like that, but we'll find out what their reasoning for not being here tonight is, and then maybe we'll have them come back in April and actually hand you the binded audit copies.
Do we have a deadline when that has to be approved?
I think we, when is the deadline?
It's for the state. It's March 15th, but I want them to know it should be finalized within the next week. So I went ahead and informed the state that it should be coming within the next.
Thank you, staff. I appreciate, I know audit season is long, so I appreciate the work that you and your team do, Kira, on this. And the draft is in our packets, also available to the public in our packets on our website as well. And I would encourage folks to read it, and if you have questions, make sure you get them to Sean or Kira before they are able to present. Next up, we have a public hearing on the Greenville County 2025 Annual Action Plan that's relevant to CDBG funds and home funds. And turn it over. Thank you so much for being here today.
No problem. I didn't know if you guys have the PowerPoint up or not. I do have my laptop if need be.
We're getting it pulled up for you.
Gotcha. So, good evening, everybody. My name's Jose Reynoso. I'm with the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority. I'm here today to present the annual action plan for the program year 2025. I guess we can go to the next slide. And so I have a small agenda, so I'll kind of go over what the annual action plan is, what funding you guys receive from us, as well as the allocation for your prior two years, your current year, and what are the eligible uses and some of the programs that we run. Next slide. And so the annual action plan is the document that we submit to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and it's kind of outlines what we plan to use the, our community development block grant, our home funds, and then our emergency solutions grants. And so the annual, the program year starts on July 1st and runs all the way until June 30th of the very next year. And so this, this upcoming annual action plan for you guys will be the first of our five-year consolidated plan that we're actually doing as well at the same time. And so one of the requirements for the CDBG funds are at least seventy-five, seventy percent of the funds must be used for, to help individuals or families that are low to moderate income individuals and families. Of the programs that we have, once, once we've kind of decided what we're going to fund, they have to meet three, one of the three criterias, of course, benefit low to moderate income individuals or families, prevention or elimination of slum and blight, and to address any urgent community needs. For our home funds, those are typically used for the development of homeownership units or rental units, whether that's, we do that in-house at GCRA or with partners. And so those homes have to be targeted towards individuals and families that are also low to moderate income households. And the chart here shows what your prior two years allocations were, as well as what the draft for, for this upcoming program year. Of course, this is all still subject to change. We won't get the official numbers until the beginning of April, and then it still may get delayed for whatever's going on in Washington at the moment. And so here, you kind of see a diagram of what our recommendations were to the city. At least half of the funds that we allocated to you guys will be going towards, I believe that's homeownership. We have a little bit towards demolition. Some of it is also due for economic development in the form of small business loans, facades for storefronts, if you want to do any kind of repairs to that. And so we've got a little bit of infrastructure in there as well. And so here are the types of programs that GCRA has that you can use your, your funds towards, again, homeownership and rental units, whether that's the construction of them. We also do rehabbing for those. We have first-time home buyers program through a partnership with Community Works Carolina, and so those will be used for down payment assistance, closing costs. Our investor programs, where if you're a landlord that has any units that need to be any kind of repairs, you can apply through, through us, and we have, we would provide a, a small interest loan. Of course, our rehab program, our in-house banking for any of the units that we, that we have. And then we have our rental assistance in the form of actual rental assistance, utilities assistance, down payment assistance through our homelessness prevention, or rapid rehousing from, through us and, and some of our partners that we also fund. Of course, here are some of the community and economic eligible uses, of course, the infrastructure improvement, facilities improvement. We also provide funding for nonprofits. So for you guys, we actually recommended the Parks and Rec and the Center for Community Services. So we work in partnership with them, whether it's for any kind of senior assistance, food assistance, and of course, utility and rental assistance through them. And of course, our economic development through a small business, business loan, and then our facade improvement. And we also have, in partnership with the city of Fountainhead, our brownfield funds that is not, so that's more of a countywide thing, but we're in partnership with you guys. So with those funds, you guys would recommend any parcels or any units that you see are dilapidated, need to be, like, aren't eyesore. You would kind of recommend those parcels to us. We would do a, what's called a phase one assessment to see what the history of it was. And if there's any kind of contamination that we know in its history, if it was a school, a gas station, something that had an underground storage tank, then that would force us to go into a phase two, which is actual cleanup. And we do this with the intended use that that parcel will eventually be a home or an apartment complex for an individual or, or a family. And so here, you kind of see the timeline of, so we, so it actually begins in January. We start taking applications, more so for our developers and our nonprofit agencies. That begins in January. We take those applications, do training, and then we do an internal kind of committee to determine which developers or subrecipients would, would get the funding. Now, for you guys, we would just make the recommendation. Typically, you guys only get the, to the Parks and Rec and your Center for Community Services. From there, we would submit our recommendations to our board in, in March. From there, they would finally submit over to the Greenville County, County Council for their approval, with the final approval in May to, to, to receive those funds. And so that is it. If there's any questions I can answer, guys?
Thank you so much. We appreciate, we appreciate the overview. For the public's knowledge, for the last five years or so, a couple of years or so, we've used these funds to help fund the eighty, the restrooms at Manuel Sullivan Sports Complex near the Miracle League Field. And these funds won't be used for that. That project's closed out, but that's an example of what these, these funds can, can do for our community. So thank you so much for the overview. Moving on to introducing some new employees. Mr., well, Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving me the opportunity, again, to come introduce two of our newest employees here in the department. And I always like to start these out by, once again, thanking our city administration and council, once again, for the pay increases you gave last year. I think that has shown in the quality of individuals we've been able to attract, as well as through some of our recruitment programs that we've had here. So thank you all once again. First, I'm going to introduce Anna Matthews. A little bit about her. I've known Anna for several years, worked with her at one point in her career. She's got municipal and county level law enforcement experience and is coming on board to us as a previously certified officer. She's got around nine years of experience. Her experience ranges from being a road officer all the way up to working homicide in the county sheriff's office. So she brings a wealth of experience, and she is our, going to be our new community police officer that we have in the department. So our community will get to know her very well.
Welcome.
Our next is Rebecca Ward. She is the city's first designated animal control officer. So that position has been placed in several areas within the city. And here soon, the police department will be assuming the duties for animal control fully. And Rebecca has got at least twenty-plus years of animal training experience. I hear she can even train turtles. She, she has worked with a wide variety of animals, owned businesses dealing with animals, and she is somebody that I felt is uniquely qualified for this position, as we're looking to build this position and take ownership of that here within our department there. So we welcome Rebecca to the team.
Welcome, Rebecca. Mr. Bell, you want to introduce Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. You all confirmed Amanda's appointment, I believe, in, at the January council meeting. And we are so excited to have, welcome Amanda Benfield. She's been on the job for about two and a half weeks now. Probably seems like a month at least. We have kept her very busy. She's learning a lot about the Fountainhead community. She's met business, downtown business owners. She's getting to know her staff. We've thrown her right into the fire with event season coming right up. So she's got a lot going on, but we're certainly glad to have her. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome, Amanda. Jason?
So I'd like to introduce John Garrison, who's going to be our full-time code enforcement officer. And he comes, I don't know if he realizes it, the beginning of the growing season, so he's going to get himself ready for all that to come forward. But he comes to us with an extensive and impressive law enforcement career down in Florida. And so we were really lucky to get his application, and he's very excited to get going. So we're glad to have him as well.
Welcome, John. Welcome. So great to, I think, last few meetings, welcome a lot of great new employees to our team. So thank you all for being, choosing Fountainhead and, and let us know if you need anything. We have no one signed up for public comments, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, which are the minutes from the February 13th, 2025 council meetings. There are motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmers. There a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any questions or comments? Hearing done. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Bell, your report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. You all have probably seen that our Main Street Streetscape project is, has already started. We held a community meeting on February 18th at the Activity Center. We're able to show some renderings of what the finished product hopefully look like, answer questions. But the contractor has mobilized, lane shifts have begun. I think a lot more of the, the really noticeable construction will start in the next month or two. And our wall in Jones Street parking lot is expected to go out to bid by the end of this month. I mentioned our event season, so April 12th, we have our 19th Annual Matt Arnold Cornbread and Collard Greens Blues Festival, I believe, with the Jeep Jam as well. On April 26th, we have our Italian American Heritage Festival. And then our first sounds of summer for the season will begin on May 23rd, and our farmer's market for the season will begin on May 24th. Also, April 26th, the police department will have their annual Autism Superhero 5K. We are still taking registrations online. Our Activity Center, as of yesterday or today, the new fitness room is complete. See, all the old equipment was removed. The, the room was, was painted, new mirrors have been installed, new signage has been ordered, and the new flooring was installed, as well as all of the new equipment. And so we're, we're very excited about that for our community, employees, and the like. In our spring sports, spring baseball, softball, rather, we had over 600 youth registrants, over 60 coaches, and 43 teams. So those were some great numbers there. Their opening day is coming up, March 29th, with their regular season games beginning on March 31st. Over at the Yon Center, we have SpongeBob Musical playing through March 22nd. And then in April, we have His Life the Musical playing. Coming up on April 15th, we have the annual Chamber of Commerce Membership Dinner. And as, two days ago, the Fountainhead History Museum has a photographic exhibit called Backstory that'll be available until May 17th.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. I'll just remind the, the public that if there's, we are posting updates on our Main Street project on our website. That's probably the best place to go first for questions, but our team is also happy to field any, any questions that people might have. So excited to see that project underway. Moving on, we, unfinished business is First Reunion of Ordnance AXZ 2024-04, which is an annexation request on Durbin, Jones, and Happy Valley Roads. I'm happy to take this one for you, Mr. Bell. This one, if the public and council remembers, back in October, we, this was on our agenda. This is a parcel at the corner of Jones and Durbin. Originally had requested plan development, had amended that request to be R15. The Planning Commission had recommended approval of this project. It was on our agenda. I made a motion at that point to postpone this until March, or until we concluded zone, our zoning rewrite project and adopted all those, whichever came first. March came first. So it automatically So it automatically has to show up on our agenda in a second. For procedural sake, I, I am gonna, I'll, I'll make the motion, but to get it on, on the table, technically a motion to accept the recommendation in a second to get it on the table. And then, just so everyone's aware, I'll make, I'll be making, my intention is to make a motion to table this, not postpone, but table this, once it's on the floor. But just some backstory on kind of why this is back on our agenda, because we did some procedural things around this. So is there, are there any questions from council about, kind of, that process? Okay. Seeing none. I'll make a motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendation on First Renewal Ordinance AXZ 2024-04. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions on the project or anything? Hearing seeing none. I'd like to make a motion to table AXZ 2024, the recommendation to approve AXZ 2024-04. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All is in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is new business, which is Resolution 2025-02, which is the allocation of CDBG and home funds from GCRRA with the presentation we just received. Mr. Bell, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, no, this is an annual presentation that you all hear right around this time. And then with an accompanied resolution, it is the adoption of the annual action plan that is presented to you in the presentation ended. That is Resolution 2025-02.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025-02? Thank you, Mr. Thomason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is approval of the amended MOU with Greenville County Multi Jurisdictional Drug Enforcement Task Force. Mr. Bell and/or Chief?
Mayor, council, appreciate the opportunity to address any questions you may have. This is not the first time this MOU has been brought forward. The only reason it is being brought forward, again, is due to wording change. HSI, of course, is a federal agency, and as they were looking at the MOU that was last signed in 2022, they did not like the wording of one section that you all should have in your packet there. So they have asked for all the participating agencies to list the wording that needs to be in there. HSI has a policy, it's a federal policy, that if a task force, or in this case, a multi-jurisdictional task force for the drug enforcement unit here, if they initiate a seizure and homeland security is a part of that, then the funds, if the DEU makes that, cannot be distributed. It has to stay within the DEU to be used for drug cases. Under state law, we are able to, under state law, or if the DEU is not seeking the seizure of the funds, then the governing board, which I serve this year as the chairman of that board, we vote on every seizure. So we are able to vote whether or not our agency will receive funding or if we're going to reinvest that back into the DEU for state seizures. If the DEU, say for instance, we have a hundred thousand dollar seizure, seizure and HSI is a party to that, then what the governing board traditionally will do, and what's going to be done at our next board member meeting is, seizures of a hundred thousand or more, we're going to seek to have those funds individually. Every individual agency will ask for their portion of the funds from HSI and not the DEU asking for that. Seizures less than a hundred thousand dollars, our procedure as the governing board is to reinvest those back into the DEU. We currently don't have someone permanently assigned to the DEU, but all of us executives, we serve in various capacities. So I've been attending meetings and intelligence meetings with them. So we do have an active interest in this, and I, I think this would be a benefit to our city, maintaining this MOU and our ability to be able to affect drug cases, not only here within our city when there's a need, but throughout the county, throughout the state as well.
Thank you. Chief, are there any questions for Chief?
Just a comment. I've, I've had a really good conversation with Chief prior to this meeting. Just to understand more about how this process works, and I would encourage council members, if you have questions, to ask, because it was enlightening. So thanks for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a motion to approve the amended MOU? Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Last on the agenda is executive session. Coming out of executive session, council may vote on items discussed during executive session. We need an executive session for the receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice relates to a pending threat or potential claim or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege. Six, 10 Northwoods Drive. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will head into executive session. Thank you all so much. Have a happy St. Patrick's Day.